Tuesday, June twenty fifth, twenty twenty four. I'm gonna open the meeting up with a prayer. Left side of my table here. Keep my gallows in the court.
Father in heaven, we call your precious name, thanking you, Lord, for another beautiful day. We want to thank you, Father, for life, health, and strength. We thank you, oh Lord, for being in the presence of us as we discuss our business this morning. And we just pray that the Holy Spirit gives us the right, the notion to do the right things. And give us a guidance that we would do the right things that will benefit the citizens of this county as well as pleasing in your sight. It's in Jesus' name we pray.
Amen. He lost for work? That's a hero.
All right, I've called the meeting to order. Now, we do have a quorum. I'd like to acknowledge the guests. Hey, can the peanut gallery be quiet on the left side?
I want to open a public hearing. Do we have anybody signed up or? Okay, we have nobody. Close the public hearing. Item number one, deliberate and consider action on the following items. Jasper Newton Health District is the first one up. Take action to relinquish on-site sewage facility inspection from Newton County to the state of Texas via Texas Commission on Environmental Quality as Jasper Newton Public Health District is no longer able to sustain the program. All right, now I've got Paul. Doc was here. He's from the, would y'all like to?
So, my name is Paul, Doc was on the environmental persons inspector for that. They are seeking to relinquish with F Services for Newton County to Newton County. Paperwork filed with our last, last week here. We all do respect. The authority.
Okay, and Ms. Diane Michelle, for those of y'all who do not know her, she's the director of Jasper Newton Public Health. So, once we accept it, we have, we'll have to start doing our own onsite sewage. Okay, now, can you explain what all that entails to the community?
The way it processes now, that anybody who wants to put a new, put a new sewer in or do any upgrades to your system has to get a permit. I've only been at the health department for a year, so I just kind of got, got into this. Actually, the authorized representative for the sewer because they hired the authorized representative to play up the health department. TCEQ stepped in. The installer, whoever it may be, does the application, say, pay a permit fee. Right now, the application for getting sent is TCEQ. They do the follow-up, they do the inspections, and do the permits. So that's part of y'all's part, what y'all would be doing, y'all would be accepting the application, payment. And then, so, a person, a person praying as an authorized representative.
So sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt you. I'm sending you a message, but I guess you didn't get it. But I had suggested that we delay the start by about seven minutes or so.
Okay, I'm sorry.
If you have anybody choose that might have shown up at the civic center to read the note and get over here. So, pause. Just going to keep it, in case anybody showed up over there since the message was.
Yeah, it was, it was, the template come back up is what we're using.
The agenda noticed that civic center, so I wasn't wanting to wait. Anybody that, did y'all put a note up?
Yes.
So anybody that might have shown up there or not, give them a chance to get their heart and come over here.
Okay.
And if anybody, if you can just wait a few minutes.
We can do that.
So, sorry I was late, but I thought I was on time. The message didn't even get sent.
I didn't get it. I've got about forty messages this morning, so.
The only one that mattered was mine.
I know, I know. I was ignoring all. So, all right, Paul, just hold on for a little bit.
Just, I'm gonna hop in my crib, but I do want to thank for the sheer support for you guys helping us on our new building, the contribution that you guys did. So I do just, I let everybody in here know that it's so appreciated. And when we do have our open house, we want all you guys to come, it's gonna be awesome. But we've had a couple of little pitches, so definitely by the end of the year. So we'll be letting you guys know. Please shut our open house, because we're so excited. Our Medicare bill is just gonna be let me have for a grand new. Oh, is that it?
They finished it. Left to pick on this. I got the red people. Well, I left it. But I believe in bar, woman is. I'm not far behind you. Where you going?
I told her that if you read the license, it's saying that the leadership from Newton County back to the state. It was saying that they're gonna relinquish it back to Newton County. And he sent me this on the items, so just. So when you, it's reworded.
We did have one extra. Yeah. I said, we did that one time.
Official okey-dokey. All right, Paul, you back up?
Back off.
Come on back.
So, to continue on, so when Stafford County relationship is to this county, it's a county with the hospital for our, I have to find back with someone to be trying, be the designated from the city. That would go out, maybe two or three. So far this month, for the year, I've had like eight, nine applications. So it's not a real big eye-to-eye thing. You have to, every once in a while, you get a complaint, paper races. So also sewage is going on. I don't know how many going into the cream, whatever. So you have to go check out and report.
Okay, well, now, what all training in this tale?
So, myself, it's Michelle, Judge, last month, with TCEQ.
Yes.
And that all come down, it had to be TCEQ is contracted to them. We train you all at the head of order. Say, what y'all Michelle suspended for the P-LI, with large rear inspection, which you might charge for client complaints. So, all of you, TCEQ.
So do you guys have everything you just said, you have an order with all of it stipulated, that's what you charge and all this?
Yes, we have.
So is that something we can duplicate, since it's been being done by you guys for both counties basically?
Yeah, but something, something that, that we had talked about in the meeting is so like, whether y'all hire somebody or contract it out, this is the time now for a permit application is a hundred and ten dollars. Hundreds, a hundred dollars of that goes to the health department. Ten dollars of it goes back to TCEQ for their, all the research fund. That's for y'all, everyone. But this would be the time y'all could raise, so to speak. Like I said, where actually, that will get in your grade every year because of the program. So y'all could actually raise those fees. I know like Jefferson County is like four hundred dollars. And it makes sense. TCEQ, we, we had a real good meeting and they're, they're on board, I mean, everyone on representation, talking a lot, then the white goat. And they're, in their words, they're here to help y'all. That would be the order, that's everything.
And to add on to that, I've talked to the city's wastewater guy, and he's willing to contract through the county. You know, he's, he's got a wastewater certifications with the sewer plant. And he would be willing to take on, you know, contract through the county to do the onsite sewage inspection. You know, with getting the training.
It's not a full-time position, so turn towards the right way with contract to get out. Like I said, today, I've had it be happy.
What happens if today we accept this? We have a choice, but we accept the, we're no longer in the business. And then, next week, someone's in a rural area and they want to build a house and they need to get a, they need to get a permit for their sewer system. What happens in the interim?
So, so everything will still go through TCEQ. I'll get this right now, until, already.
So who, right now, who sends it to TCEQ?
So, right now, installer will be in that position. I'll look at it, make sure it's there, write up the payment, and I send it to TCEQ.
So who would the installer send it to, make sure?
In the interim, they would still go through you till it's fully handed off to us, right?
He's, he's doing this.
No, you're done today.
Yeah, well. There's still a hundred, thirty days or so process. Right, after this, when y'all step, after the meeting, I'll give you the minutes that I have to send all of my paperwork. What I've done.
Well, it's thirty days.
So we have thirty days.
So we have, we have thirty days of contract, and get the guy trained on.
And, and. So are we under contract, you right now?
Authority, we have the authority to put in select ideas. That was years ago when that happened. And so we were given the authority way before you, probably in our time, this year. But so. So what we're doing is giving the authority back to you guys. And the one thing that I will say is, before our time, the way it was set up, maybe originally, it paid the program pay for itself. But whenever I took the position and started doing the budgeting, the hundred and ten dollars that you're charging for permit is not enough to cover it. Now, to go out and do that one inspection on that one sewer, the hundred and ten dollars is not an issue. But what was never taken into consideration is, you're gonna collect that hundred and ten dollars, all the way, collect that off of doing, inspecting the one sewer. But if you get ten callouts on a complaint, you get no money. So you're gonna, what I recommend is that you raise your fees up at minimum to at least what Jasper County's paying. But I've never heard Judge Allen say anything that they're not needing their, you know, they're, it's not paying, the program's not paying for itself. So my suggestion would be at least go up to a minimum, which is Jasper County. It's two twenty-five or two fifty, and I can find that out for you for sure. But that seems to cover going out and doing the inspection and then for any complaint calls that you get, because there's no money involved when you get complaint calls. Now, the one thing that also wasn't set up with us is, when you go out on a complaint, you give someone the opportunity to fix the complaint, every how many days that you guys set up. And TCEQ can help you to get those guidelines together. But then you need to set up a criteria of what are you gonna do after that period of time and it's not complete. So then, to cover your costs of keeping all going back out there with the calls, then you might want to implement a cost of going back after you went the first time, you gave them X number of days to fix it, they did not, you're going back for the same complaint. That's where whoever set up our program did not have anything set up like that. So what was happening is that we were still borrowing on that same hundred and ten dollars, but we might be going out on ten calls. So you need a structure, and the one thing I will tell you is, we're not just handing this off to you all and walking away. Paul is available, if you guys need him, call him, people can overwork with anybody. TCEQ has been wonderful for us. Ronnie, which has come to court here with us from Beaumont, which is our local person that we deal with, who is doing your inspections right now, is fabulous. He is gonna help you, the guys from Austin is gonna help you, they have been assets to us. So I don't think you're gonna have to worry about anything with that. So that's, if you need help, we're a whole call away. You call, and Paul is usually over here doing restaurant inspections a lot of times. So just call us, we will help you in any way we can.
Why not delay giving us thought, a thought of that, until we've done everything that you did, right? Why not, why don't you set that up and get everything in place, maintain the authority, keep doing what you're doing instead of just.
If you don't mind listening, so Misty has spent some time researching it, she's at a conference today, was listening in. And I think they're, they're actually gonna be relinquishing authority back to TCEQ. And then we're gonna ask to be the designee, so they're not relinquishing the authority directly to us. Misty's researched it thoroughly and pointing to the screen.
Yeah. Yeah, so, can y'all hear me? Okay, I'm sorry, I'm not really good at these earbud things. So yeah, so I researched it a good bit a couple of weeks ago. And my understanding was that, right now Jasper Newton is the designee of TCEQ. And there is a process to relinquish, which they're going through. And then they will actually, I think after their public hearing, which I think they had noticed for today, they will meet with the TCEQ person to agree on a date that their authority is over. And then, I think we go through the process of being the new designee, because I think there's gonna have to be a public hearing. There's gonna have to be an order adopted and things like that. I have all that stuff on my desk in my office, and I'm sorry that I don't have it in front of me right now.
She is great. But that's what you're doing when you send the paperwork back to TCEQ. When we send the paperwork back to TCEQ, you have to debate me. Then that finalizes that we're the authority, then they give you guys where you are the authority. So the training, so right now, TCEQ is doing all the inspections. Nothing's gonna change with that, and two of you guys are trained, you're everything, as we have been doing. When we handed it forward the first time, TCEQ. See, when we handed it forward the first time, T C Q started doing it at that point in time. And so nothing's going to change until T C Q contacts you to let you know, yes, you've met all your criteria, you know, he's trained, got his training. And then you guys set up a date to where you're actually going to be the person actually doing it. It's going to be a transitional, it's not going to be.
And I guess what I'm trying to say is we're kind of putting the part before the worst, like this is just information, you're not going to take any action today. This is a FYI that they're relinquishing back to T C Q. And so the court doesn't take any action on this, and you heard the information, and then there will be a process from here that we need to go through.
Okay.
So no action today, you receive the information, and that's it for this person to go, they're working with, a little relinquishing. Our public notice.
Yeah, okay, so it's no action today, but it sounds like there needs to be action on her, and to get a plan in place and do all the things that she said. So that we don't have a gap where, and then call you, ask her and say, hey, we need to do this, it's not, well, we don't do that for new again anymore.
Yeah, I think it's been a good information.
How's the paperwork starting to T C Q? Come back and say, you know, now we need a date that we want to relinquish it. Day, sixty days from now, whatever the. Yeah, this is, this is my process. Yeah, and that's the.
Uh, and it sounds like Misty's doing the research and is ready to have that conversation with you and.
Yes.
Hey, you came two years ago, if I remember right, when this started.
He turned all our paperwork into the state, and they had three act of that people who led that position that went through all this. So every time we would call, check where we at, oh, we have a new person, or we're going to have a new person, so. In that length of time, and the state having three people in that position, then the timeframe of it ran out, so that's why we had to start everything over again. So it, I don't want to, this is why I'm on somebody else, but it truly wasn't us, there was an employee in the state at any given time. Then we ran past the timeframe, uh, from when we started to the end where it had to be completed, so that's why we had to start the process all over again.
That, that. So we need to change this employee on state level, the word got lost. He was the main reason, because they would ask for something, send them the paperwork. Uh, last time, right, and then, then, then. So, uh, eventually, like you said.
Good, rest of the story.
Yeah, yeah, but Commissioner Paul said, we're used to that. So.
The one thing you, you guys to know is that we are there, if, when you, if Carl can come over and help anybody. A call, I mean, he's awesome about having his phone always on, we're, we're right there, if you guys need anything, we're, we're there to help.
All right, thank y'all very much, so. And so we'll take no action on item number one. Yeah. And we'll wait for further information on it. All right, going on to item number two, approved contracts between Newton County and Series Environmental Services for debris removal. Uh, this is, uh. Actually, we have three contracts, um. Item two, three, and four, uh, we have Series Environmental Services, uh, approved contracts, item number three. Between Newton County and D R C Emergency Services, L O C for debris removal. And item number four is approved contracts between Newton County and Red Watson Logging for debris removal services. Uh, you know, we had the big committee for debris removal, uh, we had Philip, Sherry, I'm not sure who else.
Danny.
Brother Danny, yes, um, and that was the three that was chosen. So we just need to approve the contracts and we went through court, chose those, but we just need to approve the contracts now between the three. So. I need a motion on item two, three, and four, well, I, item number two, approved contract. Between Newton County and Series Environmental Services for debris removal.
Back that motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Benson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner White. All in favor? All against? All right, item number three, approved contracts between Newton County and D R C Emergency Services for debris removal services. Motion made by Commissioner Bomby.
That's it.
Second by Commissioner Benson, all in favor? All against? All right, item number four, approved contracts between Newton County and Red Watson Logging for debris removal services. Good, motion made by Commissioner White. Second by Commissioner Bomby, all in favor? All against? All right, so before we leave today, we need to sign all of these. All right, we'll move down to item number five, set fees charged for civil services by sheriff and constables. And direct that these fees be reported to the compter's office. Yes.
It's possible, yeah, well, it's, I've not heard anything from J P's about the fees. And maybe soon.
That was.
We made a really big jump.
I think we're still well.
Okay. So you agree with that, yeah?
I do.
Okay, so. Um, I make the motion that we, um, do not change the fees charged for civil services by the sheriff and compter's office. All right, I made the motion second by Commissioner Bomby, all in favor? All against? Item number six, selection of big committee for R F P twenty twenty-four old man for debris monitoring and consulting. So we fix it up for. Debris monitor is in. Um, so once we do, I need a big committee. To go over the proposal. I think we had. What do we?
Get the same one you had.
Yeah, get the same one you got last time.
Okay, you know, and Sherry and you.
Oh, yeah. Make it media, okay, Morgan, yeah, Morgan, Philip and Sherry. Okay. That sounds good to me, we're, Misty's not here, we'll nominate her. So Morgan, Misty, and Commissioner. Right. All right.
I make that motion.
Need a motion, all right, I'll second it, all in favor? All against? All right, item number seven, selection of recommendations for R F P twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five for insurance coverage for Newton County. All right, we, we sent the, uh, two proposals, we had the. Big committee of, of Morgan, Philip, and, uh, Commissioner White and Misty, so, uh. Auto and reimbursement liability.
So the, the property, you know, the, the list of, the list of buildings sent to precinct four, we took. I think three, three or four, I think we took four properties off that list.
That was changes.
Some orders here from Rest Services.
I think they all were sold, from the tower, the, it's the bigger, pretty tower being put down.
Right.
Um, we removed those seven, and I sent y'all all this list.
The highlighted ones have been removed. So Judge, I got to looking at this, I mean, I guess just the question I have is. So the premium time. Four sixty? I think it was four forty-one, four forty-two.
Four four one seven one six.
Four hundred and forty-one thousand. And just a question for the court, I mean, when we talk about, I think we've got four buildings in the county that we couldn't replace pretty easily, right? The courthouse. The new precinct barn two, the sub courthouse, and the precinct barn four. The rest of the buildings, I think your building was a hundred thousand dollars, Danny.
The office, I bought it.
Hundred thousand when it was bought, and then what you built out there, Tick, if that one, I'm just wondering, if we took this. Coverage and took it down to the bare minimum, you know, what we couldn't replace, if we had to, let's just say that. The tax office and county clerk's office went away. I mean, could we find another place, even if we went out to the prison and did something extreme, I mean, is it four hundred and sixty, or four hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year? It's a lot of money for you.
You would have to, you would have to civic center and that.
Civic center, yeah.
That's the center they have. Three million?
Yeah. Like any of them. Yeah, but, well, I'm not saying you could, but I mean, you got offices down here not being utilized. You got spaces out at the, at the prison, I mean, your union's been four hundred thousand, you know, I'm just saying. We're, you know, they're betting, they're betting it's not going to burn, we're betting it is. And that's the way insurance works, right? Insurance companies betting you're not going to spend the money, we're betting you, we are, we're safeguarding ourselves. Is at some point, some of these buildings are just dated to the point of where. You know, or you, is it throw a good money after bad to insurance? Do you take the risk and say, if we had a major hurricane or what have you, could we not do something different? Could we not move people into the courthouse, move people to the prison, just to, I just think it's a question worth asking.
Uh, my, my, my throwback on all this is, say we had a hurricane, hit precinct one, knocked my barn, knocked my double Y out. Well, we don't have no money in general fund now, and I sure wouldn't have the money to replace it.
Well, you about to spend four hundred and fifty thousand dollars on insurance, you'd have that. That's my throwback. What?
I just said that's to cover everything, all of the county buildings.
Oh, I agree with you.
Yeah, I mean.
But the chances of losing all of the buildings versus losing precinct o- um, one, you know, it's just. Your plan now, it's, it's just a question of.
I mean, I understand, I'd be the same, where would that money come from?
Well, you'd have to take this money and put it in a contingency fund and say, we're not going to spend it. On some degree of it, I know that we're not going to get four hundred and fifty thousand of it, but even if it cut, and it may not cut it back, but if it cut it from four fifty to two hundred. Four fifty to two fifty, then you got enough to rebuild your, buy another bill. And it's just a question. I, I mean, I voted last year, it's been four hundred and forty-six thousand, so I'm not saying it's a silly thing to do, I'm just asking the question.
I'm going to. But you know what, it sounds like what we really need to do is. Irvin, like you were saying, the buildings that are so old that, that we could do something to do without, those things. They've just been here for years. Here, they've loaned to the county, if we eliminate those next, before we go out there, insurance again, sure. We need to look at the value of buildings that we have, just ensure the ones that we have that kind of value. Which would lower the. A couple.
Well, we'd have to keep them radio tired, insure five billion.
Oh, yeah. And that's the whole thing, it's, uh, you know, you want to be with the insurance, take the chance, and. You know, it's just a good feeling, a good place to be, and I'm sure most citizens. Breathe, that's a good place to be when you have, uh, investment coverage. On, because we've been getting, we've been getting hurricanes quite a bit in the last few years now. Somewhere where, like, it used to be, we weren't getting one, but one, one every fifteen, twenty years, but. Figure, that'd be an easier risk to take, what I'm saying.
How much is tax going to take for the auto? Tax, what they're going to charge us for the vehicles? The graders, eighty-eight thousand.
But also, let's take in consideration that our insurance expires on Sunday.
Yes, so we have to make a decision based on.
Well, we had that discussion last year, in this court session, we said, we're not going back into a corner next year. Where we have to make the decision days before, so I, and it's nothing against anybody in the room, but. That argument is why we, that argument, why I raised my hand to four hundred and forty-six thousand. And, and you were sitting next to me, and you felt the same way, we had to do something.
Oh, yeah.
So before we vote today, I want to say again, we need to do something different. We need to, you know, sit down with our provider and say, hey, here's the list, put a monetary value on what you're insu-. What it costs to insure these radio towers, like Brother Danny was talking about, what is it, you know, what are we paying for? Paying thirty-five thousand dollars to insure a building that's a hundred thousand dollars?
Yeah, like the old hospital is insured for one point eight million.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, that power hotel is nine hundred eight, or nine hundred thousand. The civic center, so a lot of these buildings to me are over. Because at the end of the day, if the power hotel burns down, I mean, if the old hospital gets destroyed, they're not going to pay us. Three, or one point eight million, they're going to pay us what that building's worth.
And we're not going to rebuild it, I mean, it's, we're not going to rebuild the building, I mean, if we did something to house. Or something to accommodate that group, we'd do it somewhere else for a lot of time.
Let's get in our trucks, let's build a building to build. We, I'm like Sherry, I'm like Bubble, we already backed into a corner, you got to do something today, we got to do it today, we're going to be out, or do it. Fuck, if this is going to be counted from Sunday.
I know, but I mean, if we sit here today and say.
Hearing the council compare market value versus replacement cost. Right, market value, I couldn't get nine hundred grand for that building, it's forty years old. How much is it going to cost to be replaced?
Yeah. So what your insurance is replacement cost, not money?
Absolutely. Yes, and Morgan's got the schedule. For replacement.
Yeah. That's love. You got, I said here again, add a free cable wire, it might blow. Spend five hundred grand again. We spent a million dollars in less than two years on issue. I said last year, we have to go through the law, I said, we'll do it. And, and you know, I don't, I don't, I don't agree with self-insuring for all of the buildings, I don't think it. I mean, the sub courthouse in Deweyville, I think, was one point three million dollars to build it, county board was like five hundred thousand, what'd you spend on yours, Philip?
Five hundred thousand.
Five hundred, I don't know that we can, I don't know that we can self-insure those, that kind of asset, but for some of these other buildings?
You're right, I mean, the old hospital is, is, I mean, if it went away right now, it would too many to be hurt, sad about it.
It'd lower our life bill.
Yeah, exactly. That's what I'm saying, we got to go and take a pick, we made a good suggestion two minutes ago, got to wait until next year to find. Need to get in our pickup and go and, go walk through all these buildings and put some value on it ourselves, if we, we will be.
You can do without it. We did, we insured three buildings in Deweyville last year that didn't exist.
That's what I'm saying, we got to have a current list that, and the stuff that, that has real value, that's what we insure.
So does it have to be done by Sunday, does Sunday set off, or do we got some type of? Replays in the state of. So there is no threat.
And you have that just in form of this contract.
Let me ask a question, as we go through the year, could we drop those buildings? There's your lead.
We drop, we.
Well, may, maybe I meant to, we're not really straw, but maybe. What you guys want to replace.
I'm playing this numbers, you know, dust, right now, we have the twenty-six billion. I'm playing this numbers, you know, dust. Right now we have a twenty-six billion, eight hundred thousand dollar fourth of the county. If the county took five million dollars from somewhere, you'll save seventy-seven thousand five hundred dollars. Y'all can find five million, little bit here, little bit here, little bit there.
We can do that before we leave. Serious, I mean.
Sixteen years is not insured for a month.
Yeah.
I'd be careful about.
That's still not. You can build your building from.
And the power hotel. Well, if it, we wouldn't rebuild a historical building. Again, I promise you. You build, I mean, coming back up. I wouldn't be in favor of bringing, I'd be in favor of building.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
I say this and let's over the next, so let's go through this and. Yeah. Yeah. Say this, say this, take it back to judge's office. Get the committee together. Hey, Judge. Is there time? Is there time to get the committee to get back together? Take this list. Go through it and, and have another meeting.
I'm not sure when Miss is going to be back in town, but I know we got Morgan. I don't think.
I mean, if, if we had this list and say we, they come up, they said, we take these off. Or there's the value.
I mean, he's saying that we can do that in the time.
Yeah. So you're. When you refund us or will it go on to next year's printing? Okay, let's do it. I'll make this motion then. So I'm going to make the motion that we pay the insurance premium, premium suggested by the big committee with the understanding that the same committee would come back to the court within a month with a reduction of assets to be insured and or the amount that they would be insured for an adjustment of that premium.
All right, motion made by Commissioner Powell. Second by Richard Palmer. All in favor? All against?
For no reason. No reason.
All right.
That includes the auto insurance except.
I think we should. I think, I mean, because.
We're talking about the buildings there.
I think we should. We should ask that same big committee to do that. I don't know that we'll have that leeway with Jack. Jack, I say, no, you can't. We're not going to reduce, but they can ask tack the question because when we go into budget workshop, I got equipment I want to get rid of that we put on the insurance list.
If your motion included accepting.
Both with the same understanding. You want me to say it again? You want me to go through all that? I make the motion, I make the motion that we approve the auto and structure insurance suggestions part of the big committee with the understanding that the big committee would come back to the court within the month with a review of and suggesting for possible reductions of the insurance coverage in either number of buildings, number of vehicles and or the coverage amount of both. And she got all that. She's better than ninety.
Johnny, yeah.
All right. Motion made by Richard Powell. Say goodbye to Commissioner Palmer. All in favor? All against?
Discussion, I wondered if we could do an executive session to discuss the glorification of ESDs, kind of doing a little legal counsel. So if you want to do some of the bottoms and come back to it.
Okay, let's, we'll, we'll do the rest of item. And then we'll come back, we'll do the ESDs at last. All right. So we'll skip down to item number ten. Uh, and number eleven. Item number ten is extend the hurricane lower disaster declaration until July twenty-third, twenty twenty-four. Item number eleven is extend the COVID nineteen disaster declaration until July twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. Make that motion. Motion made by Richard White. Say goodbye to Mr. Benson. All in favor? Against? All right. Item number twelve, do we have any budget amendment sharing? Okay, item number thirteen would be payment of bills. And so a whole.
General fine, one hundred five thousand, eight hundred seventy-two dollars eleven. District Attorney State fine, three hundred ninety-seven dollars and five cents. Journeyway general, eight three dollars. Mission special precinct one, fifteen thousand, seven hundred nineteen dollars and thirty-five cents. Mission special precinct two, ten thousand, six hundred seventy-two dollars. Mission special precinct three, twelve thousand, three hundred one dollars and fifty-one cent. Mission special precinct four, six thousand, five hundred sixty-one dollars. Dedicated road precinct three, three hundred eighty-three dollars and thirty-five cents. All oasis focal, three thousand, seven hundred sixty-three dollars and eighty-eight cents. Auto registration, one thousand, seventy-two dollars, eighty cents. Hidden County Library, one hundred and sixty dollars and seventy cents. District Attorney Bunterman, three thousand dollars. Grants, two thousand, two hundred seventy-three dollars and seventy. For total of all, one hundred sixty-two thousand, four hundred and seventy.
Make the motion that you approve the bills spread out by fine county all.
Motion made by Commissioner Powell. Say goodbye. Mr. White, all in favor? All against? So I'm making a motion. Well, I don't know. We're going executive sessions. In the. No, I'm, I'm just going.
I'm sorry, I can't assist with that request.
All right, coming back out of executive session, we're going to start back with number eight, accept the resignation of Wilson White from Newton County, ESC four and three.
Judge, I have a recommendation that I move that we decline to accept the resignation of Wilson White, pending further discussion with Mr. White as to his reasoning for wanting to resign based on the feedback, his integrity and expertise in that position.
Second. All right, motion has been made by Commissioner Powell, second by Commissioner Bomby, all in favor?
To decline.
Huh?
To decline.
Yeah, to decline.
Because this is such.
Yeah, I made the motion to decline.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All against? All right, item number nine, want Michelle Medley, Carol West to serve as ESC number three fire commissioners for a two-year term and take action to fill seat, vacant seats by Mr. Wilson White. So on this one here, we're going to take no action until we, uh, the court has a chance to talk to Mr. White. So we'll take no action on number nine. All right, now that leads to the motion from the left side of the table.
I would make that vote that we adjourned this meeting.
Motion back, I can just say it. Second by Commissioner White, all in favor? All against? All right.
Aye.